Joining me this evening are select board members, Mariano Gola Buff, Amy Shapiro. Is our vice chair and we'll start right into our agenda. Just a quick notification for everyone's schedules. The next meetings of the Winchester Select Board will be Monday, October 5th in our regular session, 7:30 PM and Monday, October 26th, a regular session at 7:30 so. And I know that we have the town clerk and the moderator here, so we'll move right to our business agenda. The first order of business is to discuss town meeting and the process and protocols for that. So thank you, Peter and Mary Ellen for being here.
Thank you. Peter, do you want me to just kick it off with a quick little rundown?
Sure, that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay, and we also have Mina here, our town attorney. We discussed over the last couple of weeks, you know, the protocol as far as during the COVID pandemic. We're going to pretty much stay with the same protocol that the town moderator put in place for the Spring Town Meeting. So Peter has drafted the letter, which I think all of you have, which indicates that we'll proceed with a fully remote town meeting with the assistance of WinCam and the company options technology that we hired as a full service, sort of turnkey service that we did in June. There were, the only concerns that I had was, you know, it's two days after the presidential election. We did talk in detail with Mina and Mark Tugend and Peter about potentially moving the town meeting a bit, calling it to order and then maybe postponing, but we did walk through all those iterations and I was informed there's also a lot of planning boards zoning articles. So after hashing it around, we decided the best thing to do is to just forge ahead. Mark has assured me, Mark Tugend has assured me, he's going to give me some support with extra folks to help along the way. And we're going to get the pre-recordings done way ahead of schedule compared to what we did in the summertime. So I do feel confident as your clerk that I can get the minutes certified, get the packets off to the Attorney General's Office for any zoning amendments and then we'll have all the certifications done in time to file the recap by sticking to November 5th.
So, Mr. Chairman, we have with the assistance of Town Council drafted the letter required by the statute seeking the approval of the board for the conduct of the meeting in a remote fashion. As the clerk mentioned, we've concluded in working with Town Council that the current health conditions really won't permit us to have an in-person meeting. And accordingly, using the same remote technology that we used in the spring seems advisable. We, since those meetings in the spring, we've had some one-to-one follow-up meetings and a few precinct meetings in which we've addressed a few of the issues that we identified. I think of the town meeting members, we have a group of maybe no more than five that are particularly a technology challenge with respect to access. We are making provisions to sort of provide them in addition to the availability of technology coaches, more one-on-one assistance. But overall, the information that we've received back from the town meeting members was overwhelmingly positive. Not without its hitches, but the regular meetings are also not without their hitches. So we feel like we're both carrying out all of our obligations under the bylaws in the charter as well as the various state statutes that govern the conduct of the meeting. And on an equitable basis, we feel comfortable with the conduct of the meeting in the same manner that we did it in the spring. We expect that we'll get a little bit better of it, at it based on our now knowledge and experience. And for those reasons and the reasons set forth in my correspondence of September 16th, I am here to ask the permission of the board to proceed with the meeting in a remote fashion.
Great. Thank you, Peter. Again, thank you, Mary Ellen, for all your work on this. I know everybody would like to be back in a full in-person session, but you guys did such a good job last time that we figured we'd, you know, give it another go doing it the remote. So, and I appreciate, Peter, also you mentioning the, some of the technologically, you know, challenged folks because we don't want that to impair anything substantively for the meeting. Because we, I'm hoping we're going to be taking a little bit more content going forward for this town meeting than we were before. I think we really truncated things because we were unsure what, what that live forum was going to be like remote. And so, so I appreciate that attention to those town meeting members because we certainly don't want them to feel like that they can't be a part of the process. Are there any questions or comments from any members of the board?
I just wanted to echo your praise of our wonderful town clerk because all that hard work that you did, Mary Ellen, with your team during the spring seems to make this, even just talking about this seem, you know, very smooth. So obviously I hope it goes over as well as the spring, but thank you so much again.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So I'll take a motion to approve the recommendations as presented by the moderator and town clerk.
So I move that we permit a fully remote town meeting as set forth in the letter from town moderator, which would open, and town meeting that would open on November 5th.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Mariano?
Yes.
Sorry. Is that a yes, Mariano?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You just wanted to ask me twice now.
The motion carries unanimously five to zero. So, Amina, was there anything else that you think that we missed or we need to clarify?
No, that's perfect. Thank you. This time because you're doing it before the warrant is issued, this will be right in the warrant. So that'll provide some additional notice there and we'll, we'll get working with Mary Ellen and Peter and, and others on making this happen.
So we won't have you hopefully running into court for any emergency hearings then?
I, I'm happy to put that behind me and I'm, I'd like to not write another statute, at least for this year.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Peter Haley, our moderator, and Mary Ellen Lane, our town clerk. And we'll, unless there are other questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item. I see, and we may skip around, but we're going to try to take care of all the business items before 8:15 to the best of our ability. And Beth Rudolph is here from our town engineer. Beth, are you here on the Tri-Community Bike Way, business item four?
Excuse me, yes, I'm here for the crosswalk on Vernon Street.
The crosswalk, okay.
Yep.
We can jump right into that agenda item as you are here. And needs to be some board action on the crosswalk.
Correct. Yeah. So I don't know, Lisa or Patty, are you able to share the figure that I sent you guys earlier today? So just by way of background for the board, we were lucky enough to get a shared streets grant from the state, which was part of the COVID response package that the state has put together. So looking for ways to improve not just outdoor seating, dining options and retail options, but also to generally improve streets and roads and sidewalks for bikes, pedestrians and safe vehicular travel. So the town put together a comprehensive package, Brian and Kelly was involved as well. And the town, as I said, was awarded $125,000. One of the projects that has been proposed as part of this grant is to install a crosswalk on Mount Vernon Street. So to the bottom of the page is the Aboriginal River and Town Hall. To the upper side of the page is the Hope Christian Church and then the fire department of the Aboriginal River running underneath Mount Vernon Street here. Similar to what we did a few months ago at the Waterfield Road Crossing. The Tri-Community Bike Way actually terminates at Mount Vernon Street and then skips over the town center, even though there is an accessible path for folks to go to use through town. It didn't technically meet the standards of the bike way, so that's why the, the true path terminates here. And so there was never, it wasn't a crosswalk construction in this area as part of the project. T-TAC felt strongly that they'd like to see a crosswalk installed here, similar to what we did at Waterfield Road. And so the grant has included money to install two curb cuts and a crosswalk in this location. So we're seeking the board approval for that. I would say at a minimum, we're probably going to lose three parking spaces. We'll have to see when we lay it out in the field, exactly what it comes out to, but like I said, at least three spaces.
Thanks, Beth.
Happy to take any questions. Sure.
And as you mentioned, the Travel and Transportation Advisory Committee recommended this is a priority project.
Correct.
Questions from board members, comments?
Well, I have a quick question and maybe this was in the packet and I just overlooked it, but at Waterfield, there are stop signs facing the bicyclists or the people trying to go to the crosswalk, sort of stop before you enter the crosswalk. Are you going to be able to do that for here?
So there is a stop sign where the bike way ends at Mount Vernon Street on the north side of this page. Because the bike way doesn't, it's just, you're just going to a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. I don't think we would install one there. Technically, the bike should be walking across the sidewalk in this area.
Okay.
Beth, the, the next closest crosswalk is right in front of Town Hall. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, you can actually see it on the page here, kind of, kind of right.
Okay. Yeah, I guess my, my, I mean, obviously my concern is the three parking spaces that we would lose and knowing that there's a crosswalk. I don't know how many feet away that is, but, and I know that it's a direct, the, the new one that's proposed is a direct line to the new, to the sidewalk, but I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up because I know that that crosswalk is very close by and it would not require losing three spaces. So.
Yeah. So to be honest, that's one of the reasons originally during the construction of the bike way that we, we didn't add a crosswalk here. Because like you said, there already is that existing one. T-TAC did feel strongly that they felt that they wanted to have the crosswalk right at the, where the bike way comes out on Mount Vernon Street for ease of folks understanding where to go in this area. But I certainly understand your concern there.
Yeah, could, could there be some sign? Yeah, could, could there be some signage that's added to help point bikers to the other crosswalk? Would that be another alternative?
Yeah, yeah, if that's, if that's with a boarded preference, we can certainly do that.
Do you know why T-TAC recommended the crosswalk there instead of where it would connect with the path on the other side of the river? So crossing essentially about, I don't know, 30 feet left, yeah, right there?
Yeah, so I think you can kind of see it on here, but there's the driveway apron for the fire department, as well as the driveway opening for this, the, the building that's between the fire department and the Abbot's River.
Is it a driveway opening? Okay.
Yeah, so I think, you know, just from, from, from laying it out, it makes more sense to have it here.
I think, you know, my concern about moving, you know, putting signage to direct people to the other crosswalk is, you know, and having them kind of, you know, go up the street and then back to access the other point is that it, it seems that people generally take the fastest point between, you know, each of the sides of the street, and even if we directed them to the crosswalk, they probably would still be quickly trying to rush across the street and be, you know, a little bit more at risk. I'm not sure if that's something that was discussed with T-TAC, but I, I know that this crossing in particular, they all were, felt, they spent a lot of time and felt pretty strongly that this was the solution.
I would just note, without having done any sort of research on some of the T-TAC priorities here with this particular location, that a couple of things, one, I totally agree with their chair. Two, I think that having a few crosswalks, maybe this is debatable, I'm not sure, but may assist in keeping the speed down. And then the, and then the third item, as we're all aware, is that there may be some development at some point soon at the Town Hall side of this location. And, and in which case, this crosswalk might see even more usage. So I totally appreciate what select member Shapiro was noting, but it seems like on balance, despite the loss of the parking spaces unfortunately, that on balance, it'll, it'll, it'll be used now and perhaps even more so in the future. Thank you.
Hey Jackie, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, I, again, I just, I don't want to overdo this point, but I think, you know, that's, if there is development there, those three parking spots will also get used quite often. And I think if I think about the bike way behind the high school, it's, it weaves all over these neighborhoods and with no crosswalks. And I'm not saying that that's the right thing to do, I'm just saying that people on the, that are traveling on this bike way are, are used to that type of movement along the route. So I think a sign to say, you know, take a left 30 feet to a crosswalk is not going to deter them, and I, and I, you know, but, again, I just, I want to point that out, because I think, I feel like every meeting we're having lately, we're, we're taking away spaces. And I know, you know, I just think that we have to, three spaces is a lot. And I think as we continue to have more construction, and, and I just think that we need to really be careful about what we're doing and when we're doing it. And it seems like right now, there's been a lot of parking spaces being taken away. So that's my only concern. I think obviously, I'm all for safety, and if, if we, if T-TAC thinks that that's going to provide that much safety, I'm just saying holistically, looking at the parking situation, we've been talking a lot about taking away parking spaces in the last few meetings we've had, so. And I just don't think that it's, it's a huge deal to make some concessions and have them go to this other already existing crosswalk, so. That's all, that's my, my thought.
I mean, I think in, in my case, you know, the problem with the other crosswalk is that it's backtracking, so most people won't do it, so then we have the safety issue of people jumping onto the street. One thing that I would like to consider, to have T-TAC consider though, is what if we put the crosswalk just in this picture, to the right of that driveway, essentially in front of the office building there? Then we lose one, one parking spot there, which is that car there, instead of three. In fact, we might not even lose it if we extend the parking spots to, because there's an opening parking spot right now, right in front of where, right there, yeah. If we use that for parking, it would actually encourage anybody coming down the bike way to say, hey, I can't cross the street here, because there's a car right in front of me. And we put a sign there that says, "The Bike Way continues" over there. And then it's much closer also to where the bike way naturally continues, which is the west side of, of the bridge there, on the, on the south side of Mount Vernon. So I think we can do that. It gets us, it gets us a crosswalk that, as a user of the bike way, I would use that more, because I don't have to backtrack. And we lose maybe one parking spot or maybe zeros, if, if that's the sign, so I, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, Mariano. I think the, it would be more natural too, if you're coming from the high school, to make a right and go down to where the, that crosswalk, the potential crosswalk that you're talking about is located. Yes, I'm pointing at my screen and no one can see, but.
That's where the mouse has gone.
Yeah, so that seems logical. And I think what they're really after is someplace where there's a curb cut, and you're not sort of cutting between cars that are parked, and you're not going down, you know, over the curb in your bike. So I, I think it's worth asking them to consider that.
Okay, so it seems like it's the pleasure of the board will make some, return it to T-TAC for recommendation on crosswalks there, and trying to preserve parking spaces. So there's kind of two options, one that Amy had recommended about signage there to direct bikers and walkers to the, the existing one, and then existing crosswalk, and then, and then another one across, as Mariano said, in that location there. Beth, is that, I'm not sure when T-TAC is meeting again, but can we get that back on the, their agenda?
So I think I might just speak informally to the co-chairs of T-TAC about that, and then also just take, visually take a look out there myself, to make sure that that seems like it would work. My only concern is timing with this grant, the letter we received says that the projects are supposed to be done by October 9th, which is highly unrealistic. So it's likely that they'll give us until mid to late October, which is even still a very short turnaround. So if, if it's the pleasure of the board to kind of look at both options, if you could maybe have your vote be open-ended, if you're comfortable with it, so that T-TAC and staff could work out which is the best of the two options, without having to come back to the board for a second vote, so that we could get this done within the timeframe of the grant, that would be helpful.
Okay, and thanks, Beth. I see that Roger Wilson is here, one of the co-chairs of the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Committee, who has made this recommendation to us. Roger, welcome. There's been some concern about the location of this crosswalk. I don't know if you can hear me, but I know that T-TAC invested a lot of time in this, and have you guys considered these other options if you've heard us?
Yes, I, I, I raised my hand just to underscore the point, well, I, it, the, the point that Beth made about the timeframe of this, in other words, it, it needs to happen quickly. But I would also point out that there are spaces down the, down the road in front of Town Hall that are not currently marked as parking, but certainly could provide at least a couple of parking spaces. And, and cars do occasionally park there now. So I think there are solutions to make the net loss of parking spaces lower. As part of our charge is to be concerned about parking. And one of the reasons that we're concerned about walking and biking is so that people don't require parking in order to get downtown and go to restaurants, go to stores. If we're serious about the complete streets, we need to be serious about completing the bike path, which is what this proposal is about.
Roger, so one of my concerns with putting it right there, it's not just losing parking, but it's also that if you're coming down the bike way, immediately you see an open spot and a crosswalk, and, you know, that might pose a safety issue if somebody's riding their bike, doesn't stop, and there's a car coming. I know in other locations, we offset the sidewalk slightly, like for example, on skilings. It's not exactly where the bike path ends. What do you think about putting it in front of the office, the white office building there? As I mentioned earlier, I don't know if you heard that part.
Yes, and, and, and the thinking there was what Beth had indicated, the, the conflict with the fire station. I, I will point out, if you want to see how those offsets are working, you can, you can see the tracks, nobody goes out and takes a right angle and, or, and continues down the sidewalk and then goes over a crosswalk, if they can cut straight across. So you see that in back of the, the Jank Center, and you also see that up on Cross Street, that people just go, take the, uh, cut across the grass, so that there is no grass there.
So, we're, we're going to have to, we have to keep moving, unfortunately, sorry, Susan. So will, Roger, is there a way that T-TAC can pick this back up?
I, I think Beth hit the nail on the head. We, we, we're not meeting in the timeframe, but if we confer with the chairs, and I think that would be the best we could offer at this point.
Okay, thanks, Roger. We appreciate it, and T-TAC's, you know, willingness to work with this tough intersection. And I think that we've been trying to piece together some of the, the loose ends from the bike path to make sure that everybody is, is safe, so.
Okay.
Thank you. So, and I imagine that you and Ben will be in touch with Beth?
So I'll, I move that we approve installation of this crosswalk as presented, or if the T-TAC is agreeable, and it's okay with the town engineer, add a location farther to the west, closer to the actual end of the bike path.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
So, I'm sorry, so the two options are that either the current location or, or to the west? I, I'm sorry, the current location to me just doesn't make any sense. The, the southern side of it doesn't connect to the, to the bike path. Only the one to the west would connect to the bike path, so I, I have to vote no. I don't think that the one as presented is, is where this crosswalk should go.
Roger, are there, where Mariano is indicating with the crosswalk, are those parking spaces there? They look empty from, and not lined, but are those typically where there are?
Where are you referring to?
To the west of where the crosswalk is labeled on the, yeah, so just.
So the, the, the middle, the space where the, where the, is, on, on the, where the crosswalk connects to the existing bike way is not a parking space currently?
Roger, that's not the bike way on the, on the south end. The bike way on the south end is on the west side of that bridge, not the east side of the bridge.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Technically, there's no bike way that goes to the town center, right? There's the, there was the existing path that people use.
That, that path was built specifically as a, a part of the.
The bicentennial bike way.
Yeah, yeah, well, it was built specifically as part of the whole discussion of the bike, building a bike way.
So my question is, kind of south into the west, where, where Mariano is suggesting that we connect right there, further down, aren't those parking spaces across the street that south more there?
No.
No, so the, the issue on that, that is there's no parking because of the swing of the fire truck getting in and out of the station. So I'd have to look at, I'd need to talk to the fire chief to make sure that the crosswalk in this area could be put in without needing to eliminate that last parking spot.
But I, I would agree with Mariano, that if it was feasible to do it here, it, it would be better.
Okay, so.
I think there's a.
So we, so we, you know, we meet next Monday again, so if between now and, I mean, is that too much time, or do we need to move forward with something? I mean, it's.
I, I would suggest you move forward, and you've got a motion on the floor. Mariano could change his vote.
I mean, I'll change my vote if the motion is to construct it on the west part.
No, I mean, the, the, what I'm suggesting is you, you vote it as, one way or another, build, build the ramps.
So I, I think Susan's motion allows for, for T-TAC to weigh in on, you know, with either, either option there, you know, I don't, we can certainly, I, I don't know enough, I haven't looked at that intersection to, to know, we don't have all the answers for it. So it would be my preference to go, to have T-TAC and Beth review that area, talk to the fire chief, and then see if we can come up with something that works. It may not work in that suggestion that we're making now, and, you know, that, that might be the only one there, so. Not, not really sure where to, where to go between now and.
Yeah, I, I can certainly investigate the option closer to the fire station. I just can't commit to that tonight without being out in the field and looking at things and talking to the fire chief.
So the concern is that it's too close to the fire station for a crosswalk, is that?
So number one, I just, I don't know where exactly the driveway openings are there, so I have to look at kind of where the curb lays out. And number two, the parking on the south side of Mount Vernon Street is restricted, so that the, the fire trucks have enough space to turn in and out, because they back in to the, to the opening, or to the opening in the fire station. So they have to have enough swing space to, to pull out and, and pull back in.
Can't be a crosswalk as part of that swing space, or yes?
I don't think it would be safe to have a fire truck crossing a crosswalk, but that's something I would want to talk to the fire chief about. So I, I, I certainly can investigate, I just can't give you 100%. Since it wasn't something we had talked about previously, I can't say, like, say tonight whether I can, whether that's possible or not.
So Beth, do you think that we would?
The chief is on.
I know, we, we just, we, we can't just do this, I mean, we've got.
My vote is still no. If, if the option of, of what is presented is still on the table, then my vote is no. But if it's to the west of that, then my vote would be yes.
Okay, I mean, we still don't know if that's possible. I mean, that's, this is the question is.
Roger, can I just ask Roger while he's on? Roger, this is Amy. Is, is there, I know that it's not ideal, but adding signage to let the, the travelers on the bike way know that if they take a left and can use that crosswalk, that's probably, I don't know, 30 to 50 feet from that opening of the bike way, the existing crosswalk, is there any reason why that wouldn't be an option?
I mean, it, it, it makes it very uninviting to use the bike way. I don't think it's effective, and, and I think very few people would use it, and people would be confused.
You know, I have to think that we're redoing a lot of the discussion and deliberation that T-TAC already did. And I'm, I'm comfortable with giving, you know, them the option to do what work, you know, working with Beth, to do what makes the most sense. to do what makes the most sense and not lose time or possibly lose the grant money while we redo this.
I agree.
Um, so, uh, there is a motion that is made, seconded. Um, and I think I started with Mariano on that one and you said no, voted no, Mariano?
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Yep. Um, okay. Uh, and we're taking roll call votes on this. Jackie?
Yes.
Uh, Susan?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Uh, and yes for me, the motion carries three to two. So, um, Roger and Beth, um, you'll touch base with Ben and see if, what works best there to try to meet the constraints of the grant schedule. And, um, and if there are, you know, any, any issues there, um, we are meeting again next Monday. So it can come back to us. Um, but I imagine staff can kind of have some of these discussions and we can loop in with T-TAC and come back with something. So, um, thank you.
Thank you.
Were you, were you on for anything else that's on the agenda?
I don't think so unless you had anything you needed me for.
No, thank you. Um, we'll just keep moving through.
Thank you for attending. Sorry, sorry Chair, I just wanted to thank.
Uh, thank you Beth. So we'll, um, move on to agenda item three under our business. Uh, I see the fire chief is here. Hi Chief Tustin, how are you?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing us to present tonight. Um, we really appreciate this. I'll try to be brief. I believe a package has been sent to you. I'm just going to read right from the letter that I sent and then be available with questions. So since assuming the position of fire chief, our goal of mine has been to establish a memorial for all public safety personnel in the town of Winchester, fire, police and emergency dispatches. This concept was discussed with Chief McDonald and he too enthusiastically agreed that this would be a great idea in addition to the public safety complex. Our school resource officer Sergeant Diane Perrinick and one of our senior public safety dispatches, Paula Biagioni, offered to assist in this endeavor. And I must say that I am extremely happy to have these two outstanding individuals on this project. Their unwavering support is testament to their dedication to both community and to the public safety profession. With this committee in place, in June, I approached the town manager with the concept to construct a memorial at the public safety complex and we received her support as well. Tonight, I am presenting this concept to you and seek further approval and support to make this goal a reality. The project is divided into three phases. Phase one, design, cost estimates and approvals. Phase two, appropriation of funds, fundraising and purchasing. Phase three, installation and dedication. We're in phase one right now and it's nearing completion. We issued a joint notice to all of the public safety personnel inviting them to share ideas, designs, et cetera. Now figure one in your package attached was the final sketch conceptual design that we settled on. The inscription on the bronze plaque will read, "This memorial is dedicated to the brave men and women, past, present and future, who selflessly protect and serve the town of Winchester." The main body of the memorial will feature three generic badges of police, fire and dispatch. And above each icon will be duty above police, dedication above dispatch and honor above fire. Uh, since we're close to the end of the year, the actual date we inscribe will be 2021. Atop the memorial will be a chrome fire bell, which the fire department will donate. And if it gets two through seven further show design elements. We settled on a polished black granite monument with the bronze plaque for the main inscription. Figure eight is an example of what the polished black granite could look like. Um, this was actually the memorial in Lubin. Our estimate of the cost to actually construct the monument will be nineteen thousand dollars. Uh, we estimate another thousand dollars for miscellaneous expenses such as concrete for the foundation, electrical lights, et cetera. Our DPW Director Jay Gill has offered the assistance for his department there by reducing any labor costs to install. In phase two, we're looking to solicit donations from various organizations. We will be approaching the three public safety unions to request their support, both financially and to ask them to reach out to their contacts for donations as well. We have received advice from town council on fundraising efforts by the town. His response is in figure nine. Our goal is to initiate fundraising immediately as the monument company requires fifty percent down to begin construction and then fifty percent upon completion. There is a lead time of eight to ten weeks from the deposit to completion and the quarries do shut down for the winter. So we are hoping to place the order prior to that so the raw material can be obtained. In phase three, as previously mentioned, there's an eight to ten week lead time to actually construct the monument. With this in mind, we're looking at spring 2021 for the final installation and dedication ceremony. Once installed and dedicated, future observances will include brief acknowledgement during the Memorial Day ceremony and observances during law enforcement week, Firefighter Memorial Sunday, the nine eleven observance and other ceremonies as needed. In closing, it's our belief that this is a memorial to all those who have served and continue to serve this community. And tonight I am seeking your support for this project. And if there was any funds that could be contributed to initiate this project, that you would approve such an effort. Uh, with that, I know I rushed through that, but I know your time is tight. So I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you Chief. Um, we appreciate it and we, um, and rushing is okay because we're getting, we're getting a little bit behind. So appreciate it. Um, so you're looking for some funds from the town for this project now?
Well, ideally, yes. Um, you know, it isn't, um, we're looking at it as a town project. Uh, we do want to try to solicit donations from various organizations as much as possible. Um, but if there was any, um, any support that the town itself could do, we would certainly speak on behalf of all the public safety personnel. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Lisa, is there a staff recommendation at all?
Yeah, we fully support this.
Is there any sort of contribution from the town side that you would recommend?
Um, so we haven't talked about that at this time, but I can bring a recommendation forward to the meeting on the fifth, if it's approved tonight to move forward.
Great. Uh, thank you. Any questions for the chief? Comments?
Just really quick one. Um, I'm sorry if I missed this. Where is this going to be placed?
So if, if you look at, um, if you have the letter that I sent on the, the last page where I signed it, there's a picture showing the flagpole in front of the fire station. Um, we measured it and we designed it so that it would, as you're looking at that picture, it would be placed to the front of the flagpole and off to the left so that a member of the police or fire department standing behind the monument would be parallel to the flagpole. It would be able to ring the bell.
That's great. Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for taking the time Chief with regarding this, um, project and all your service to the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I move that we approve a monument for the public safety personnel uh, in front of the public safety building as presented by Chief Tustin.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes for me, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Uh, thank you Chief. We appreciate it. Let us know what we can do.
Thank you and thank you for your support.
Um, moving on to the next agenda item, Patty, is Amanda Lewis here from Swim Winchester?
Yes, she is. I'm going to let her in.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm here. This is Amanda.
Hey Amanda, how are you? Thank you so much for coming in to give us an update. And where Swim Winchester is, the select board had asked, um, I think a couple of years ago for regular updates. And we didn't want to put too much pressure on you during the pandemic, probably a difficult time to be raising money and, um, and working on the pool project, but it sounds like you, you, your team has still been busy. Um, so if you want to just give us a, a quick update, we'd appreciate it.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, yes, so when we met, I, I know it doesn't really seem like six months ago, but it's, it's all a blur. It was really over six months ago. Um, we were very thankful to get your permission to continue our work and to know that the, um, uh, site was going to be held for us for another two years. But we did talk about giving you a progress report every six months. So, um, that's what I wanted to do, just fill you in a little bit, um, on what's been happening. Uh, as you say, Mike, we have, um, not done a lot with fundraising. Um, but I, uh, am happy to say that the top item on our list of next steps, when we did present to you was to update our 2014 feasibility study. And the goal with this is to better define the programming, the financial planning, the fundraising partnerships and most certainly community needs for this project. So to that end, we received some recommendations, we conducted interviews and we have hired the Isaac Sports Group, um, which is a consulting group. And they are going to get support from another consulting group called Water Technologies Inc. Uh, to do this work for us. So we signed that contract in mid-August. We've just begun working with them, um, having weekly meetings. Um, I did send for the record two bios of the groups that we've hired. Uh, we're very excited about them. They are a great team. Um, all, all ready. Uh, it's been terrific to get, to get started on this work with them. Um, so we are very excited about what, what all this is going to reveal. And, uh, we, the part one of this is a ten to twelve week study. So, uh, we, that's well underway. Um, I also did just want to mention that, uh, we were supposed to back in March, present to the school committee and that's just on hold for, for the moment until the school committee has a little bit more time to meet us.
And I think they were, you were scheduled at that point, but got postponed due to the COVID-19 schedule. Um, so, um, we appreciate you coming here to provide an update for us. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Uh, no questions, just, you know, thanking, uh, the whole group for, um, all of the work that they're doing. And, uh, you know, good luck with the fundraising.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks Amanda. Um, so, uh, moving on, uh, we have a, a public hearing scheduled. We're a little bit behind for eight fifteen on the waterfield lot. So, um, Lisa, I think if we can start letting folks in, I'm not sure if anybody is, is waiting there. Um, but, we can open the, uh, public hearing on the, uh, waterfield lot, um, project that the select board has been, uh, interviewing applicants for, um, over the past couple of weeks. We had issued a, an RFP, a, uh, uh, a couple of months ago and now we're evaluating the, the applicants. And, um, I think that Jennifer Goldson is here as well to, uh, kind of open up, um, with a short presentation. Um, so Jennifer, anytime that you're ready, um, that would be fantastic.
Okay, that, that's great. And now am I able to share my screen on this or no?
We give Jennifer access.
Yes, I, hold on a sec, I.
Okay, great.
Yes, give it a try.
Okay. Um, yeah, I don't really see the option here.
Okay, hold on.
Okay.
Is it coming out now?
No. It's, I can just give it without the slides. It's, I think it's fine.
Sorry, I'm giving you permission, but it's not working.
Yeah, that's okay. No worries. Um, so I'm going to run through it. So thanks for having me here. I'm, I'm one of the consultants who was, was helping on this project. Um, the project, I'm going to go through a timeline, but just in general about the project, was really a partnership between the town coming out of your housing production plan and mass housing. And after you did your work on the housing production plan back in 2017 through 2018, a number of strategies came out. And I know that you'd been talking about this lot for a lot longer than that. Um, but that was the latest momentum that gave rise to this project. And, um, and so last spring in 2019, uh, the town issued a request for qualifications where you were really looking to, to create a shortlist of qualified developers before you asked them to submit actual proposals with concepts. And so you did that and you qualified, um, nine developers. And then in the winter of 2020, you, or I'm sorry, later in the spring, through the winter and into the spring, we really worked on creating a request for proposals. And we worked with a, a working group, um, that consisted of, uh, town staff as well as board and committee members and other, um, residents with cer- certain professional expertise. Um, and you released that request for proposals to the shortlist of developers. You received nine, uh, sorry, six responses in August 2020, the end of August. And five of those met the minimum criteria. Uh, and so now you're really in this process of reviewing those proposals. And I'll get into a little bit more about that review. Uh, but just so people know, the next steps would be to recommend a developer and to negotiate an agreement and to go to town meeting in the spring. Um, there's, uh, a, a land disposition vote and potentially some other votes as well that would need to be, uh, happen in the spring for Springtown meeting. And then the developers have different timelines for their projects. Um, I don't know if you'll get into that a little bit later, but essentially the project would happen over the next few years. So in terms of redevelopment objectives, we spent a lot of time working with the working group uh, on what are those primary development objectives? And the real, the three themes that really came out very strongly in the request for proposals is they wanted, uh, mixed income with a high degree of affordable housing if possible. And there was a preference toward rental housing, seeing that the majority of units were for households earning between thirty percent of the area median income, up to hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. At least twenty-five percent of those units would be reserved for households making at or below eighty percent of the area median income and therefore count on your subsidized housing inventory. Uh, and then that ten percent of the units include three bedrooms. And that would help ensure that those units are, are counted on the town's subsidized housing inventory. So that was one thing, mixed income housing. The second redevelopment objective was really about design considerations. This is a, you know, very historic part, your town center of Winchester. And, uh, we spent a lot of time thinking about what kind of criteria, you know, what kind of design are we looking for? What kind of criteria would make sense? And so three things that came out primarily were integration of the building and the site within the neighborhood, careful consideration of both scale and style of the structure and public amenities, uh, with access for neighboring businesses. Um, and then the third main theme was environmental sustainability. So, uh, minimize, if not eliminate, the use of fossil fuels and incorporate other non-energy features to achieve resilience. And so, um, you know, a lot of work was done around, you know, what does that really mean and what are we looking for? But that's the gist of, of those three. So again, those three redevelopment objectives, mixed income housing, design and environmental sustainability. So when, when we drafted the RFP, we had two, uh, really two thresholds of criteria. One was minimum, um, threshold criteria, which was essentially if a developer submits and they meet this minimum threshold criteria, and I'll tell you what that is in a minute, then they'll go on to be ranked in this comparative criteria. But if they don't meet that minimum criteria, then that's it. Um, and so there were six proposals submitted and five met the minimum criteria. So one minimum criteria is conformance with all the requirements of the submission. Two was a minimum of at least five years of affordable housing experience. Three, a minimum that twenty-five percent of the units are affordable and would count on the subsidized housing inventory. Um, also showing a successful track record of at least three or more projects and financial capacity demonstrating that there's at least two times the pre-development budget that would be needed for this project. Then if the developers and five of them did meet this minimum criteria, then they moved on to the comparative criteria. And that's where you really are now, is ranking the developers based on that comparative criteria. And so the, the categories, they're much more specific than I'm going to say in this presentation, but the categories of the criteria deal with affordability, design and scale, site layout, sustainability. design and scale, site layout, sustainability, parking, collaboration. And that really means demonstrating that they have collaborated on municipal or other public properties before for development. Cultural and public amenities, traffic mitigation, including bike and pedestrian, land disposition and lease, they have to specify what the agreement is, and the town can rank them based on those proposals, parts of the proposal. A pre-development timeline and property management, and then also construction management. And within each of those comparative criteria, there was a, there's basically a ranking. So it's a score of highly advantageous, advantageous, and not advantageous for each one. So the five teams were Civicco, NOAA, Penrose, Waterfield Preservation, and WIN. And if you saw the slide, you'd see that we have the whole development team, but I'm happy to answer any questions, just to remind folks who's on each development team. And then I also have a slide here of the five concepts. I'm happy to send this to Lisa or something if you do want to see these concepts while you're talking. But the slide I have here just shows the five concepts from the same view from Waterfield, so you can sort of be reminded of those five concepts. And that's it. So hopefully, I kept it short and sweet and covered the main points, but we're happy to take questions. But I don't want to take up too much of your time either.
Thanks Jen. Really appreciate that. I think that, you know, we've been dealing with this project for several years now, looking into the easements and the state of the land there and moving forward with the RFQ and RFP process. So I think it's helpful for people that haven't been aware that this process has been going on. It seems like a lot is happening very quickly. It really has been a lot of work over a long period of time. And Mass Housing and Francis Goyas has been working with us as well as your team has added countless hours of work to this project, as well as many volunteers that have been on the committee. So thank you. If you do have that slide to circulate, send over through Lisa to the board, that would be helpful. And I apologize for not being able to get your slide deck up on the Zoom screen, but
No worries. I'll do that right now.
Thank you. And I don't know if there are any questions from members of the board for Jen right now. We certainly are going to have a longer dialogue about this and other, give opportunity for other members of the community and stakeholders to weigh in. So just jump in if anybody has any specific questions. Jackie?
Yeah, I have a couple real quick, and I want to be cognizant of the time. And first of all, thank you so much Jen for all your professionalism and assistance on this project for such a long period of time as you outlined. But in any event, two things that, and it's fine if you want to provide anything to us offline. I know that there's been a lot, you know, we have a lot of material. But I guess two things that I was trying to, you know, when we look at the visual and a lot of the components that you indicated, I just wanted to make sure that I, at some point, was cognizant about a couple of other areas that I'm not suggesting are as important as those that you outlined. But, and I know that some of this material is in the submissions that we got, but two things, one regarding the future, kind of future management of the sites. I'm like, are there, do the proposals vary along those lines? You know, like management companies, et cetera? Since this is, in many instances, rental, you know, we obviously want to make sure that there's good storage and good storage ship so that those who live in these beautiful buildings are going to have a high quality of life and responsive management. And then the second one has to do with, we talk about sustainability, and I totally appreciate that. I guess I'm, in addition, was just kind of curious about environmental impacts or differences in those impacts based on what's been proposed and any differences in impact on the town's infrastructure. So not suggesting that these two areas are in any way more important than, you know, all the criteria that you mentioned, but at some point offline, I guess if there's anything else along those two areas that maybe you could provide us, I think that'd be helpful. But I don't need to necessarily take up time at this meeting. I just wanted to flag those. Thank you.
Watch out, your security system is going off over there, Jackie, too. So right there behind you.
Exactly. That's why I quickly muted myself. Thank you.
And just a reminder, I know that the Select Board is using a little bit different of a format than we have in the past, using the webinar format through Zoom. So if you are attending the meeting as a participant, please raise your hand so we can elevate you to make comments or ask questions. So, and certainly members of the board can ask questions, but I do see that there's, there are some folks that are that are jumping in. I know John Servier is here as well from the Housing Partnership Board. John, did you have some comments that you want to make on the project?
Yeah, I have a few very brief comments as opposed to a question. Do you want me to go ahead?
Please.
Okay, just three points very quickly. To expand on Jennifer's history, my recollection is that the roughly 20 years ago, as part of a strategic plan initiative undertaken by the then Select Board, people started looking at the Waterfield parcel, asking the question, are there things that could be done with this land that would be a more positive contribution to the town than using it as a surface parking lot? Those emerged into some visioning studies. They, those ideas got incorporated into the new zoning for the Central Business District. And then incorporated in the Housing Production Plan, the master plan, and eventually the request for proposals. And the proposals that have been submitted are really very consistent with the original work 20 years ago. There's been extensive outreach, there were surveys, there's been lots and lots of public meetings on this. So I just want to kind of expand on the history. The second comment I would make is that the Housing Partnership Board and many others are very, very impressed with the high quality of the proposals that were submitted. And what impresses me even more is the enthusiasm and the excitement that the developers had demonstrated in terms of working in Winchester. They put far more thought into the design of the building, into the designing of affordable housing, into the sustainability measures than I was expecting. You know, I may be a slow reader, but it took me roughly two hours to read each proposal, and they're exceedingly high quality. The third point I would make is that to, you know, we could choose any of them and they would be fine. To differentiate among the five and to kind of decide which one to start negotiating with, I think it's necessary to jump into the details or, in other words, get into the weeds. I submitted a memorandum to the Select Board yesterday examining some of the housing differences between the developers in terms of the size of the units, the income levels served on that. There are similar details on sustainability, there are similar details on financing that need to be looked at and need to be addressed either in the selection process or in the negotiation process. And so I know you have lots and lots of time on your hands. So I would encourage you to, you know, start to look at the details behind the general objectives that Jennifer described and behind the 12 evaluation criteria have defined. Because then that starts to kind of inform you. A few of us have started having conversations on the pros and cons of a plaza entrance versus a gateway entrance. I'm not going to get into any of that detail tonight, but they're very interesting, very thoughtful, and there's some subtle differences that just don't jump out right at the beginning. So those are my comments.
Thanks, John. We appreciate the comments and your work on the Housing Partnership Board. I know that Housing Partnership Board has been meeting frequently and really jumped into the meat of this project. And so it's been very, very helpful as affordable housing is one of the major objectives of the project. So we, one of the issues that came up during the application interviews over last week was, what does the management of the building look like as well? And I will get to it a little bit later, but Francis Goyas, who's been working with us from Mass Housing through this project, I think has done some analysis there. So she can comment on that at a later point. But I do see that there are several people who have jumped in to make comments, one being Chris Mulhern. I assume that you're here representing the chamber, Chris. I don't know if you had comments to make regarding the Waterfield Lot project?
Yes, thank you, Michael. Chris Mulhern, on behalf of the Winchester Chamber of Commerce. When we were asked to evaluate the proposals, the Chamber Executive Committee and the Board appointed a subcommittee of six to look at this problem. The six of us were able to review all five of the finalists and also to listen to the presentations over two nights last week. And finally, to review the written responses that were made to the questions that were given to all of the applicants. We met again this morning and agreed on a set of findings with respect to this project, which I'd like to just review with you right now. First and foremost, the chamber supports the redevelopment of the Waterfield Lot for a mix of residential, parking, retail, and community uses. The loss of 97 parking spaces currently located on the site is a major concern. The chamber favors new rental units in a range of sizes for a wide mix of income levels. The chamber favors schemes which build an edge to the common along Waterfield Road with generous access to the interior of the site. The chamber favors retail and community uses for the ground floor space along Waterfield Road. The chamber favors developing the space adjacent to the MBTA station as an active and lively pedestrian zone. In addition to pedestrian and bicycle access to the MBTA, the chamber favors programming the plaza space for a variety of community uses, including pop-up food uses, temporary markets, performance events, and both permanent and temporary art exhibits. The chamber favors the inclusion of 35 to 40 public parking spaces in the selected scheme. These spaces should be designed to encourage their use by shoppers and restaurant users rather than employees or commuters. The chamber would welcome an opportunity to occupy ground floor space within this development. The chamber favors maximizing the landscape features of the site, both at grade for the public and above grade for the residents. The chamber welcomes a community-based design approval process in hopes to participate. The chamber supports the goals outlined for sustainable design and believes that the additional soft and hard costs will benefit the residents, the other users of the site, the community at large, and the planet. The chamber believes that all five of the finalists are capable of producing a great project. Relying on the analysis and summary prepared by Mass Housing, the chamber thinks that four of the five developers have reasonable, fundable, financial packages for the long term. The chamber looks favorably on proposals where the developers have a financial stake in the long-term results. Knowing that the details of the design will change through the process, the chamber thinks that the Civicco proposal comes closest to meeting the goals outlined here. Finally, returning to the issue of parking, the development of the site will result in the loss of public spaces, as will the reconstruction of the MBTA station, reconfiguration of intersections on both ends of Waterfield Road, and the addition of new crosswalks as of this evening's meeting. The total loss of spaces will be in excess of 100. We urge that the Select Board develop a parking master plan to ensure that the center remains the vibrant center of our suburban community. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Chris, and the chamber, and the chamber subcommittee for the work that you did on this. Are you going to be submitting that in writing as well?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. We'll send it along in the formal letter.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Let's see, I see a few other members of the community here. David Miller, I know that you've been here or I think that's you, David, if you're there.
Hi, Mike. No, I was not trying to talk, actually.
Oh, you weren't? Okay, I saw you there. I thought you might be weighing in on the project, so.
I would be happy to add some comments if there's time.
Sure, we'll circle back. I see that there are a couple other members with their hands raised in advance.
Let them go first. Let them go first.
Great, thank you. So if we could also let in any of those folks who have their hand up. I think Sally, yeah. Yep. Hey Sally, how are you? You're welcome to make comments on the Waterfield project. I know that you've been participating in the the subcommittee that has been working on this.
Well, as an interested observer, as a town meeting member and a longtime resident, I first of all, thank all of you so much for working so hard. And also to Jen for the professionalism and thoroughness that you've given to this project. I'm really impressed with the whole RFQ, RFP process, and the quality of the proposals. I look at it from my view, not with the ability to understand the financials of it and how the financials impact the town. I understand that there's some provisions in various proposals for various ways that money will come to the town in advance or in pieces over time. And certainly, I have paid attention to how much the town benefits in terms of its compliance with affordable housing requirements for the Commonwealth. And I think that we've shown a really deep commitment to meeting those requirements, and I think that's excellent. I look at it also in, from just the look and feel and spirit of the place and the space that various developers have proposed. And the one that I just love is the Civicco proposal. I know there was a couple of them that had an archway that brought the the community through an arch into this other space. But the whole notion of creating rooms, to me, is very appealing, and it does create a space where the town can convene and have events. And if we're having an event in the common and there's spillover space into the courtyard that is adjacent to the Waterfield Lot building and the MBTA, it just, the sense of liveliness is really critical to me. And also, I like the look and feel, the commitment that they made to really having it not be overly impactful visually, but very much integrated with the look and feel of the town. It's not too tall. The second-story courtyard that overlooks the first-level courtyard is very inviting and open to the public. The fact that there's 40 public parking spaces, I realize we're losing way more than 40. But to me, that's a meaningful addition to, and to the idea of parking downtown. And I definitely endorse John's idea of a parking master plan for downtown. We definitely need some kind of a thorough analysis on that subject, separate topic. But as far as community engagement and look and feel and whole architectural massing, I personally love the Civicco proposal. So I just put my two cents in the ring for that. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much Sally. I appreciate your work on the working group as well. Erica Hoffman is also here with her hand raised. Erica, how are you?
Oh, hi, good. Thank you, Michael. I've just got a couple concerns in regards to this. Again, it's in relation to the parking of downtown. You know, obviously, I live up towards the Lexington Way like you do. And it's a good 45-minute walk downhill for me to get to town, so we mainly drive. And so with the losing the 90 car park spaces, and it's, and I feel like already now, it's tight getting parking around town. And if you're looking at losing another potential three by the town hall, library, you know, it's hard to park around there. you know, it's hard to park around there already when you're, when the library is fully open and you can go in normal non-COVID times. So I'm quite concerned about that. And because if there's lack of parking, then I feel like, you know, you're not, you're gonna, a lot of maybe town people will not come to downtown area and they go to Lexington or Arlington because they'll find it's easier to park. And I would hate for that to happen because I think we have a beautiful downtown area. And, and I think it's great. We're doing all this outdoor dining, and so it's drawing more people downtown. So I'd like to sort of make sure that we're trying to maximize how many parks around town we could, we could gain or, or minimize the loss. And then also, my other concern is about schools. I've been sort of heavily involved in listening in on the school committee. And at the last school committee, they were saying for next year's enrollment, they are 100 kids over and they don't have space in the current schools now. So they were saying they have to use, they're gonna have to find another building to house those students. So with these new rentals or whoever's coming in, you know, what, how are we gonna limit the numbers of the kids? Or what are we gonna do with those kids that come in and in our schooling system? Because we basically won't have space for them. So I just want maybe the town to adjust that, sort of address that, and sort of come up with a plan for the increased number of kids that will be enrolled in our school system.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate your comments. I see Marty Jones is here as well. Marty, I didn't know if you had any comments. It's okay if you don't, but welcome to hear from you if you do.
Thank you, Michael. I, I don't think I have much to add at this point in the discussion. I do want to sort of second the feeling that everybody has that these are a great group of developers. They all have a fantastic track record in the Commonwealth and I think have the capability to do it. So I think that's, it's wonderful that the town has the opportunity to, to make such a big decision with some good choices. And I do think it came out in the interviews, they're all concerned about downtown and about how the development of this site will add to downtown and make it better. So I'm just optimistic about how we will have some exciting things coming forward.
Great, thanks, Marty. And as I mentioned before, if there is anyone that would like to comment at all on the Waterfield Development Project right now, please raise your hand and we'll let you in, elevate you to speak. Otherwise, Francis, I didn't know if you wanted to touch a little bit on the management piece. I know that the question was raised earlier, I think Jackie had asked, and you've done some work. It came up during our, the interviews last week.
Sure, my internet is a little bit unstable, it says on Zoom. So please just let me know if I sound like a robot at any point. Basically, after we had the different interviews with all the developers, there were a lot of questions about management being one of the, one of the areas that, that folks wanted more information on. Because some of the RFPs listed a third-party management company, others did their own management. And the select board and the folks interviewing were interested in learning more about it. And so at Mass Housing, as one of the lenders to developers, we, we do look, we, we have very strict evaluations towards the management companies prior to us making any loans to developers. And, you know, because the town went through this dual-part process with first the RFQ and then the RFP, you've, you have done a fantastic job in selecting developers that have an excellent track record and have previously, all of them have previously gone to Mass Housing for loans. So we have them all, they've all gone through our evaluation process and have all passed it. And as part of our process, what we do, it includes in-person reviews of properties that the company currently manages, listing of the training provided to staff, including training that's required by some laws as well as any additional training, accounting and procurement methods for, for anything they do, marketing and leasing for units, including ensuring that there is affirmative fair housing marketing being done that abides by both state and federal laws. We look at how they maintain their records and what sort of maintenance programs they do, both preventative as well as maintenance when any issue arises. And we also look at the time it takes for them to answer any maintenance concerns. And we also look at how often they, they carry out property inspections. And I forwarded the list of what, what our evaluators do to both town manager, the town planner, and Michael, I, I think you got a copy too. And so all of the management companies that are being used by the RFP respondents have undergone and been approved by our evaluation. This is Mass Housing's own evaluation, different than the one that the H2D does or other lenders, private or public, do. However, given the track record of all these developers, it would be, I would say it would be unlikely that they don't have a, a less-than-stellar management record. But it would be what they're, they would have to have management approved if they go for any loan or subsidy. So it's, you know, you're sort of insuring yourself in multiple ways, too.
Great, thank you.
I, I was just gonna follow up real quick. Thank you so much, Francis. And certainly offline is fine for the additional information because I know we're, Mr. The Chair is trying to keep things moving. But I understand your points and very much appreciate your comments about how they've kind of met certain standards. But I guess at some point, it would be interesting to know how they compare with each other and whether or not some are approaching, you know, a certain, you know, how the variations really compare, strengths and weaknesses, that sort of thing. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Francis. Also, I see that there are a couple other participants with their hands raised, Ruth Trimarky and Dan Ronan. If we could elevate them. Hi Ruth, how are you? I'm guessing you're here to make comments on the Waterfield Project?
Good evening. Can you hear me, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yes, I sent in written comments and I don't have anything in addition to add to those. But if you'd like, I could make a very brief summary of that for the board.
Please.
So head and shoulders, one of the developers stood out to me from a climate change or sustainability lens. And I'm speaking as a private citizen, a resident of the town, but that proposal is Civico. And specifically, they stand out in terms of the goals that we had in the recently released 2020 Climate Action Plan that you folks voted in unanimously on June 1st. They really would showcase climate adaptation here in, in Winchester and simultaneously show how that could be done while meeting affordable housing and the needs of the local business community, and also remain fiscally and financially responsible. The highlights of the plan, and I arranged them in the order they're presented in the Climate Action Plan. So Civico met those, those actions that we'd like taken, and I'll run through those. In terms of energy supply, Civico has a solar array that will provide 100% renewable energy to the project. And that's notably in contrast to, to other developers who showed solar panels on their sketches. But during their interviews, they actually said that the buildings would only be solar-ready. So Civico is committing to making 100% renewable energy, some of which would be used to power EV chargers in the garage. On building efficiency, Civico offers lead gold, and they stated that they will strive for passive house level. On transportation, like all of them, of course, they're immediately accessible to the MBTA. But the Civico's design is really open and inviting, not just to the building residents, but to all of the town residents and the workers. And it encourages the use of public transportation by drawing people in. They also have designated EV charging spaces and in the garage itself. And they have the usual bike storage and so on. On solid waste, the only ones, if I recall correctly, that propose and their preference is to not take down the Chamber of Commerce. So that substantially reduces the amount of solid waste from demolition that would find its way into our, into our transfer station. In terms of resiliency, if you look at flooding, they have made a lot, put a lot of attention to that. They've got a vegetable swale on the south side. They've got this beautiful roof gardens. And they've got the park, of course, is they're making use of native species of pervious surfaces. And they've proposed that they can reduce the heat island effect by placing mature, large trees strategically on the north side of their plaza, specifically because the south side is already shaped by the building itself. And then lastly, they enhance public health and safety through their use, their collaboration with a third-party property manager. And there's a number of things that they mentioned in the, in the interview. But for example, the community roof garden, they refer to as a mini-farm. And that's consistent with the Climate Action Plan goals to produce food on-site whenever it's feasible. And you can use carbon emissions from transportation in that way. They also have on-site composting. And as you probably know, 25% of solid waste is due to food waste. So they will be working with the residents to offer programming on how to maintain the roof garden. They don't just put up some boxes and walk away, but they would like to work with the residents in terms of public health and safety regarding that, healthy eating, composting, and things like that. And then lastly, from a design perspective, and again, as a resident, it just stands out to me as a very welcoming space for residents and passersby. They have enormous attention to detail in terms of the people flow, the use of the outdoor space, corporation of public art. And it's just a very attractive and functional building from, from my way I look at it. Thank you so much for letting me make those comments.
Thank you, Ruth. Appreciate your comments. And I see Dan Ronan is here as well. Hi, Dan, how are you?
Good, thank you for allowing me to speak here for a minute. I'm a resident with a young family in town. And, you know, over time here in town, I've gotten to know a lot of the local business owners that have their shops in and around this area. And to me, one of the biggest pieces to this is the parking. I believe Mr. Shapiro mentioned that earlier, and possibly losing a few spaces over by the fire station. And the idea of being able to coop, you know, about half of the spaces that would be lost through the plan that Civico has put in place, you know, I think is meaningful to the town. I also think in their plan, the idea of having four floors versus five floors kind of sets more in line with the heights of other buildings in town. I know there's a couple that are a little out of place, and I feel like that would fit in well with the town's plan. And the idea that they do have kind of a welcoming area for spillover from town events, etc. So again, this is, I'm just a resident with, with a young family in town and just thinking of, of other young families in town who are, you know, trying to park with their kids and making sure they're getting in and out of cars and having a garage space for that, that'd be a safe space for them getting in and out of, would be very helpful. So thank you.
Thanks, Dan. We appreciate your comments. And, you know, parking is one of the major considerations and we'll certainly take the recommendation from Chris Mulhern in the chamber to really have a, a parking master plan. We've been doing it on a case-by-case basis, but, and we have evaluated several areas throughout town for the location of actual elevated parking and garage space. And there's been, based on the, the cost and the topography, and it, it, we realized it was not feasible for the town. So, and we did, we did review the Waterfield Lot for the, for the same parking garage, but felt that the near-transit housing development was the, the best option that was recommended to us. So just to give everyone a little bit of background there. I don't see, or I see one other person with a hand raised, Eric Damari. Hi, Eric, how are you?
I'm well. How are you this evening?
Good.
I just have a question. Have we done a thorough audit of the energy systems for any of these buildings? The question comes up because if you look at the Civico proposal, they state that the estimate does not include a fire pump or automatic transfer system. And it also states that the pricing does not include solar panels. So will they update these proposals with that equipment? Or does the town have to worry about that, rearing its ugly head?
Thank you, Eric, for those comments. Some, some of these questions did come up in our interviews. And it's my understanding that as we move from concept to selection, that those numbers, specifically some of the, the solar panels that have been mentioned as part of a couple of the, the projects, will be fleshed out in more detail. But it's, it's an important part of it. The parking is another consideration. When, I know that we've heard Civico mention a couple times tonight, where there is underground parking considered, there's also a the, the question of cost and feasibility there too. So we've, we've been really working with a lot of the applicants, not to just show us something that we like the looks of it, but to make sure that it's, it's actually feasible there. So that's a, another good comment to make regarding the systems and the renewable energy portions of the project. So thank you. Not seeing any other hands raised at this point. So we will take other questions or comments from members of the board or staff members that are present here, or anybody else that would like to weigh in. I don't know if there are any members of the select board wanting to make comments. Okay, not seeing any. I see our town planner, Brian Zekelli, is here as well. And I didn't want to put him on the spot, but Brian, I didn't know if there's anything that you wanted to weigh in about the project that you've been very involved in since the beginning?
Um, no, the, I guess the only thing I will reiterate, just that hate to say, it sounds like a broken record here, but everyone's really hitting it on the head, the fact that we do just flat out have very, five very solid proposals. So I can't stress that enough. I guess I'll just talk very briefly just about the parking. Is that, you know, we did do a robust study of the downtown. We looked at all the, the potential locations, some we had control over. They were meaning they were owned by the town, some they were not controlled, they were owned privately. And in terms of a cost per space analysis, the, the best possible option, according to the Walker Consulting Group, which is the, the parking group that helped us, it was to build a structured parking and wedge mirror. So in terms of what a master parking plan would entail further, I, I don't, I don't know what that would be. I'm certainly, we're certainly would, you know, open to looking into it in terms of what, what that end result might be. But in terms of looking for structured parking in town, we have, we have looked at that. Outside of that, I didn't have anything to add. The process has been, again, led by Francis Goyas and Mass Housing and Jennifer Goldson and her team at JM Goldson. It's been, it's been, it's been a really wonderful experience, so glad to be a part of it.
Thanks, Brian. So we'll, at this juncture, without any other comments from members of the select board or staff, we will move on to our next agenda item. We are scheduled for several interviews for various volunteer positions. I will start with, there's a singular appointment to the Wright Lock Farm Board. And I think Sneha Patel is here for that. And then after that, we will take the, the applicants for the Climate Action Advisor. the applicants for the Climate Action Advisory Committee as well as we move along. Hi Sneha, how are you? Welcome. This interview process is fairly laid back and informal, just an opportunity for the the board to ask some questions and hear a little bit about yourself and your, your interest in the the Wright Lock Farm Board. I don't know if you could just give a little bit of your background and why you're interested in this appointment.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Mike. Nice to see everyone and thanks for the chance to talk to everyone today. So like Mike said, my name's Sneha Patel. I've been a Winchester resident for 18 years. I actually live right next to the farm. And, you know, just a little bit about myself, you know, I work in the biotech industry at Alexion. I have a, have a son who's a sophomore in the high school and have been very, very connected to the farm, really just from the beginning. I mean, I'm someone who uses it on a daily basis, but, you know, even back, you know, when it was being considered to be sold for an Avalon, I was part of the team to try to save it and keep it a farm. So, you know, why I'm interested in this opportunity really is because I find the farm to be an amazing part of our community. And, you know, I have been an active participant and just in where I am in my life now, I can give more back, you know, like I said, I have a son. I work full time, but I have a son as a sophomore. And so this is kind of the time in my life where I can give back to our community. And this is the place I want to do it. And, you know, as I've been watching the farm evolve over the years, you know, I'd love to be a part of that. I think some of the things that I can bring that might be somewhat unique is, you know, I, I work in human resources, so a lot of what I do is about, you know, educating and advocate, advocating and getting people inspired to do things. And as our farm keeps evolving, I'd like to be a part of that here. So that's just kind of a little bit about who I am, why I care about the farm. I care a lot about, you know, food and food scarcity and just eating well. And, you know, Mike and I actually know each other personally. I care a lot about cooking and just, you know, creating great environments for for food. But I'll stop talking now and see if there's any specific questions for me.
Great. Thanks, Sneha. Are there any questions or comments from the member of the board?
I'll just say thank you for being interested. You seem to have the number one ingredient, which is your passion for the farm. Also, your expertise professionally seems like will really assist and support the farm's efforts because it relies on people, obviously. So anyway, thank you so much for your willingness to serve. And you seem like you'd be just a fantastic member of that team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. If there are any other questions or comments, I'll take a motion to appoint Sneha Patel to the Wright Lock Conservancy.
Okay, so I move to appoint Sneha Patel to the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy Board for term to expire October 2021.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Mariano?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And yes, for me, the motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you for your service, Sneha, and we look forward to hearing more from you.
Thank you. All have a good night.
Thank you.
So now we are going into the interviews. I apologize for being so late. We intended to start some of the climate action interviews exactly at nine. And we'll make sure that we get everyone in and tonight that's here. I'm going to be taking them in the order that that I have the applications. And Ruth, I know that you are here and and already spoke on the Waterfield Project. So if you could also sneak a little bit about your interest in the Climate Action Advisory Committee. And just as kind of a heads up to everyone that's here, the board is going to be taking interviews and then we'll be deciding and notifying the applicants of the appointments. So we're not going to be voting individually on on everyone. We want to hear from from everyone tonight. So thank you, Ruth.
Thank you, Mike. And you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, and thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. Yes, I've had a longstanding interest in climate change. And especially here in the town, I've been working for the past several years on the previously existing Climate Action Advisory Committee and chaired that. And worked with the town manager and soliciting and recruiting the 18 folks who put together the Climate Action Plan for the town. And that was a true privilege to work with that team. And some of those folks I hope are here this evening. And and I know they've applied for the new committee as well. And it was just a fantastic experience to work with these talented folks and begin to bring in the focus from international and national reports to continue to ask the question of how these recommendations from these large bodies should be applied here in Winchester. And that is what we distilled and did over many months, 14 months actually. And and produced a large number of recommendations with a hierarchy of those recommendations for implementation here in our town. So, um, you know, I really, I guess I would invite the board to ask me any questions if you would like. But I am here simply because I have a passion for the topic. It's it's something we really have opportunities here in town to both reduce our carbon pollution and also increase our resiliency. So that's why I'm here. And I hope that that the board will choose to appoint me to the to the committee.
Thank you, Ruth. Any questions or comments? Members of the board? Thank you, Ruth, for for your work and your willingness to serve. We'll hear from the next applicant that's in my list, Jason Roder. Hey, Jason, how are you?
I'm well, Mike. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great.
If you could just give us a little bit of background of your interest in the Climate Action Advisory Committee. That would be a little bit of that background on yourself.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you for taking the time to consider my my application for this committee. I am a very happy resident here in Winchester, been here for about five years, have two girls in the elementary school. Live very nearby to Jackie. And, you know, my career and has really evolved around climate and energy and environmental issues from the education phase to the company I work at now. Actually, one of our customers is the Winchester Burger King. And we've been helping them become more energy efficient for about five years now. Spent a lot of time in their, in their facility working, but maybe less eating. But I've, a long way of saying, I have done a lot of work on this in my career. And as a resident in Winchester, what I'm trying to do is find ways to participate, to contribute. I participate in some of the youth soccer programs, but I felt like this is an area that is a passion of mine personally. And it's something that I might be able to contribute to uniquely in terms of helping the town achieve its objectives that were excellent, you know, extremely well laid out in the plan. Very impressive plan, you know, over almost 65 pages. So there's a lot to do. It's been well thought out. And, you know, I think the town is full of very talented and passionate people. And if, you know, I can help be part of the team that makes makes this happen, then I'd love to do so.
Great. Thanks, Jason. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to our next applicant, Tatiana Gupta. Please let me know if I'm not pronouncing your name properly.
That's correct. Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Terrific. Well, thank you very much for taking a moment to speak with me and giving me this opportunity. Like everyone that you're speaking to, I've got a real passion for the topic. I I have been living in Winchester for for two years now. I've got my first child entering elementary school this year, sort of integrating. We, I have, so for a living, I'm, I work in executive search. And so I'm a headhunter. I recruit directors and board members for for companies of all size and shape. I think the the skill sets that I have developed through my career are all about influencing, educating, navigating different, you know, agendas, bringing people together and and trying to land a result. And then from a personal journey, I have, you know, been super mindful about how I I live, you know, my purchasing and consumption habits and trying to make my household greener. So I've been here two years and I've been involved in the Heat Smart Project. I've been really looking at making my house more efficient. And basically, I would really, you know, bring a consumer view to, you know, to the committee, kind of having done a lot of research my own self. And I've also gotten involved with the likes of Mothers Out Front. And I've been just amazed on how, you know, we have been able to kind of go out and educate people around, you know, health and climate change, the effect of, you know, gas on on the health of our children and how much you can do at a local level. So I love a platform to really get involved with the community of Winchester, bring in, you know, have the support of mothers up front and really push the agenda. It's an excellent plan that's been put together. And I'd love to have an opportunity to also bring, you know, young families and people my generation also into these conversations. So I'm very excited about being able to participate.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Thank you, Tatiana. We'll be in touch. And we'll move on to the next applicant, Diab Gereus. Diab, I think that you're here.
How's that?
Sounds good.
Excellent. Thank you. So I have been a resident of Winchester since, no, I think around 1996. To be honest, I can't remember. And I became involved in things in Winchester back when Hamilton Farm was up for sale at Avalon Bay and was part of the Citizens Group, which then worked with Trust for Public Land to come up with an alternative development scenario. Since then, I joined town meeting. I was elected to town meeting. And I'm now in my second term on the Town Planning Board. My interest in climate action actually stems from early, from a recognition about 30 years ago, when I was personally very much interested in saving wilderness and wildlands in Southwest. And the discovery that there was a lot of pollution in some of the very remote lakes, in part due to acid rain, which was coming from many hundreds and thousands of miles away. And so that really made me aware of how long distance effects can change local ecosystems. And that one of the issues is that the ecosystems and their inhabitants don't really have a voice. And the humans have to speak for them. I see climate change as sort of on the the extreme end of the continuum of how human actions have impacted the natural world. And it's also one where we, as individuals, can make an enormous difference in part because there, at least in this country, there isn't a lot of political will, it seems, at top levels to push for solutions. So I see, I'm also, I'm trained as a scientist. I got my degree in astronomy. And so I think what I could bring to the to the committee is an eye for analysis and detail and sort of trying to get to pragmatic but useful solutions, which is what I have to do sometimes in my daily work. Thank you.
Thanks, Diab. Any questions or comments for Diab from members of the board? Thanks. Okay, we'll move on to the next applicant, Joshua Bears.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for your time and letting me talk about my interest in this volunteer position in the town. I'm a relatively new resident, having moved to Winchester in 2017 with my wife Jennifer Dupree from nearby Arlington. And I'm still discovering kind of the wonderful natural resources that the town has. Recently running along that tri-community bikeway, passing young children fishing on a pond behind the bike path. I'm just struck by the wonderful resources we have. And I think joining this committee would be, for me, a way to ensure that these beautiful resources are there for the next generation and the future. And a little bit about me, I'm a Business Systems Analyst at Akamai Technologies in Cambridge. I'm a reformed computer scientist who does much more data analysis right now. I have four children, one who's in college, two in high school in Cambridge, and one who just started first grade in Lynch. And I think we have a great responsibility to the next generation, future generations, that we take positive action to reduce our impact on the environment. And I'd like to get involved in the town by contributing my time in collaboration with the other members. And I'm really thankful to the town for creating, you know, the 2020 Climate Action Plan, specifically all the members of the Climate Action Committee and chaired by Ruth Trumarchi, who's created this blueprint for us to take and follow to make concrete improvements towards a sustainable future. What I can contribute is I've been involved in a green committee in my place of worship in Lexington, where we gather data on potential projects to reduce carbon footprint. And then we could prioritize those that would have the most impact. Also, in my day job, I am involved in estimating the carbon impact of the servers that we have around the globe with the goal of offsetting and reducing them through efficiency. So I bring this analytics background and my passion for the environment. And welcome any questions. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Are there any comments or questions from members of the board? We'll move on to the next applicant, Tom Ide. Hey, Tom, how are you?
Yes, I'm fine, thanks. Do I sound okay? Does it come across okay? Okay, great. Well, well, thank you, Mike, Jackie, Mariano, Amy, Susan, for letting me interview for the Climate Action Advisory Committee. I do consider it a privilege to serve the town of Winchester. I've been a Winchester resident now for more than 30 years. My son graduated Winchester High School in 2015, and my daughter is currently a senior at the high school. And I also served on the previous Climate Action Advisory Committee up until August of this year. In terms of my overall interest in the environment, environmental conservation and renewable energy adoption, I want to leverage my business and marketing experience to help expand the use of renewable energy and enable Winchester's sustainability programs. This includes contributing to the Client Action Advisory Committee, helping it adopt what I call an ecological or an ecocentric perspective, which is focusing on sharing and collaboration, the cooperative actions of the committee, coordination with the town's leadership and citizens, and also support of sustainability in the local ecology. I want to help the Climate Action Advisory Committee succeed in terms of developing and implementing valuable projects and programs and help encourage participation in town and in the field events by the community itself, as well as by the residents, and then to provide results in terms of raising awareness, increasing the resident's support and collaboration regarding climate change programs, greenhouse gas reductions, and improving Winchester's climate, Winchester's resiliency and adaptability. And I provide a couple of proof points regarding those particular statements in that I am currently supporting the town of Winchester in its climate change mitigation programs, including Sustainable Winchester, wind power, which is our Green Municipal Aggregation Program, and helping support the Wind Power 100 campaign, as well as the Heat Smart Alliance, which is an outgrowth of our Heat Smart Program for our energy efficiency and heat pump adoption, as well as, you know, coordinating, putting together the electrical putting together the electrical vehicle ride and drive event that unfortunately was postponed because of COVID. So my personal desire is to help improve the expansion of cleaner environments and the broader use of sustainable energy capabilities. I'm very optimistic and very encouraged regarding the long-term potential of our ecosystems and I'm ready and willing to work with others in improving our energy use and environments and their sustainability. And I'd like you to think that if you help nature, nature will help you. If you sustain nature, nature will sustain you. If you protect nature, nature will protect you. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate that. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Great, we'll move on to the next applicant, John Brown. Hey, John, how are you?
Hi, good. You can hear me, I take it?
Yes.
Okay, good. I am a retired pathologist. I've lived in Winchester for two years in the Ledges. I've been interested in climate change matters since about 2014, when I heard Bill McKibben talk in Pennsylvania where I lived before. Since then, I've been active in some climate organizations, particularly Citizens Climate Lobby and 350 Mass here, the Metro North Node here in Winchester. The opportunity for applying for this position was pointed out to me by Alan Field, who I think is on the current committee or the previous committee. I've read the plan and it's excellent. I really am happy to see that groundwork was laid and that you proved unanimously. So that's a great place to start from. I'm a new member of Town Meeting, but I'm not sure what's happening there because nobody's notified me other than that I was on a post. I'm on that. I liked certain elements, particularly, I mean, I liked a lot of elements in the Climate Action Plan, but one of them particularly was the, the concept of the town being an advocate for climate actions at higher levels of government, such as the state and the federal, because a number of the aspects for us reaching the goals, which you have accepted for 100% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2050 are basically going to be impossible unless policies are implemented at the, particularly the national level, but the state as well. And I will say that I've been very impressed with the other people that I've been listening to. And if I'm not accepted for the committee membership, I would definitely be interested in working in, you know, in subcommittee positions with them.
Great, thank you so much, John. Appreciate it. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next applicant, Eric Damari. Hi, Eric, how are you?
I'm good. Hello again. Thank you for taking my question earlier. The question actually relates to what I do. I work in the energy industry and I work in a few different areas. I work for large oil and gas companies and I work for large utilities. I work with companies that integrate emergency backup systems for fire, for power generation and things like that. The reason why I want to be on this board is because I work in the industry. I see, I know what the future brings for a lot of these companies. I'm working with one large oil and gas company on a gasoline product that its feedstock is entirely plant-based and they're trying to implement it within the next five to 15 years. But we're running into an issue where we can't get that product to market yet because the secondary issue is that product eats overflow sensors, which prevent spills. Huge problem in the market. I, I know these problems. I see them happen all the time. I see, I work with a company in Connecticut right now who's replacing their natural gas, who's replacing their coal-fired generators with natural gas. But one of the problems is there's going to be so much demand that they have to ban, as it stands right now, natural gas construction for consumers, which is going to be an issue for those people who want to heat their houses down the road. So, I mean, that's probably the quickest way I can describe what I do and why I'd want to join. I am committed to climate change research. I'm running my house on 100% biodiesel this entire summer, working with Newport Biodiesel in Newport, Rhode Island. And we're literally trucking it up from an island to my house. And we'll be analyzing the carbon emissions, the nitrogen, the oxide emissions, everything. So I just, I live and breathe this stuff and that's why I'd like to join.
Great, thanks, Eric. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next applicant then, Wei Chen.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Wei Chen. Thanks for the opportunity. I have a PhD in computer science and I worked on cancer research and MGEJ and Harvard. And then I went on to work in Akamai Technology and recently joined Facebook as a software engineer. I have my personal hobby or interest in sustainable energy. I have been following very closely to the recent development in green energy and electric vehicle. I'm a fan of Tesla and I truly believe in their mission of bringing the whole world into using only sustainable energy. And also, my family only drives vehicle and we have solar panel. We produce more electricity than we use. And I moved to the town of Winchester in 2016. And since then, I have been participating in many of the community service. And I got elected into the town member meeting and I want to get to know what happened in the town, as well as have a sound voice of, for example, from our Chinese community. Also, I invited by Ruth, I joined the Climate Action Planning Committee to help in the work group of transportation, especially in electric vehicle, to produce the new climate action plan. So I want to continue to working on that part to, to the implementation of that plan. So I utilize my expertise in the understanding of how the green energy works, how electricity works, what's the benefit of that and how, how to promote that to the, to the community. And try to really have some impact to the, to the, to the, to the town locally. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Wei. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from members of the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next applicant, Rick Eno. Hey, Rick.
Hey, Michael, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Very good. Hey, thanks for giving me the opportunity. Rick Eno here. I've lived in Winchester for 27 years with my family. You can see us outdoors quite a bit, whether we're sailing on Mystic Lake, hiking in the fells, or just walking our dog through town. We're around. My background, somewhat interesting, because I began on the dark side, working for an oil company for about 10 years and then had the opportunity about 15 years ago to become CEO of a biodegradable plastics company. And there, we launched a new technology that would replace existing plastics with biodegradable plastics, finished that, and then I became CEO of a company that was making bio-based chemicals, the chemicals that replace oil-based chemicals. Now I run my own consulting firm here in Winchester focused on industrial innovation, how to get new technologies to market and help people adopt them. Outside of my day-to-day professional work, I've really got a passion for sustainability. I'm on the, what's called the President's Council for a nonprofit in Boston called CIRIS, an organization for a sustainable future. I've served on the advisory board for my alma mater's Cornell's Atkinson Center for a Sustainable Future and I help a number of clean tech companies get started. I'm involved in the startup community. I just wrapped up six years as a trustee at the Winchester Community Music School and I really wanted to stay involved in Winchester and do what I could to contribute and apply my skills. And sustainability is my passion and it has been since I moved from the oil company to the green side. I think what I could bring is I do recognize that amidst a lot of the noise out there, change actually happens at the local level everywhere. People have to embrace the technology, they have to adopt it, they have to often change their behavior. And I think Winchester can be a showcase of how this can be done at the local level and we should be proud of how this plan is rolled out. And it's a very important plan and I'm keen to bring my enthusiasm and skills to help the town do it. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, Rick. Appreciate it. Any questions or comments from members of the board? We'll move on to the next applicant, Praseta Kalavi. Praseta, are you there? Hey, Praseta.
Hi, thank you for, considering my application, ecosystem function has been both my vocation and my avocation. I have advanced degrees in ecology, animal behavior, and evolution. I've done fieldwork in East Africa, Madagascar, Australia, Costa Rica, Florida, which gives me considerable breadth of ecosystem experience. I have a consulting business for habitat restoration in New England. I teach at UMass Boston. I've been in Winchester 32 years and actively served in Winchester since 2004, when some neighbors and I started helping protect Davidson Park. I was a founding member of the Climate Action Task Force, which wrote the first climate action plan and a member of the Climate Action Plan, oh, sorry, of the Climate Action Advisory Committee that was formed right after the first climate action plan to implement that plan. I've served up until the present, until that committee was dissolved. I'm still on trash pickers and a Town Meeting member. I would very much like to continue in this work. I think it's pretty much the most important thing we can do right now because without it, we're not going to be able to do anything else. It has been a great pleasure to work with the people that I've come in contact with through trash pickers, through Town Meeting, through Climate Action Advisory Committee. And I hope to be able to continue with that.
Great, thanks, Praseta. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay, we'll move on to the next applicant, Ken Pruitt. Hey, Ken.
Hi, Mike. Thanks for having me. To the members of the, of the board, thanks for giving me this opportunity. My name is Ken Pruitt and I'm a 10-year resident of town, live on Thornbury Road with my family. I have a daughter in college at this point and a son who's a junior at the high school. I was a member of the Climate Action Plan Committee that wrote the 2020 Climate Action Plan. I chaired the Energy Supply Subcommittee and helped out, you know, just overall with all sections of the plan. And I'm, I'm committed to helping Winchester successfully implement that plan. I think it's going to be a tremendous challenge to do so. There's no, no illusion about that. But I think there are a lot of great residents willing to step up and volunteer and that combined with, you know, continued leadership on this issue from the select board and also from the town manager, I think, will get us moving in the right direction. Just a little bit more about me, I've spent a little over 25 years in the environmental field, mostly in the areas of climate change mitigation and resilience, so reducing greenhouse gas pollution and preparing for the impacts of climate change. The last three years, I've been the energy manager for the town, for the town of Arlington. In that role, I'm the town's lead on energy efficiency, renewable energy, and net zero planning. I chair the town's Energy Future Committee, which is fairly similar to the Climate Action Advisory Committee. And I'm the, the primary author of the town's net zero plan, which is a plan to get to net zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050 that should be, we should be finished with it by the end of this calendar year. And in terms of, in terms of this volunteer role, I'm actually interested in serving on a working group rather than the committee proper. You know, I have a pretty demanding day job and I like to give, give things my all and I just don't think I can commit to serving as a full member of the committee. But I'm willing to serve on a working group. It might make the most sense for me to be on the, the Energy Supply Working Group, if you agreed, but I'm also willing to serve on any of the other working groups that form because I do kind of work in the full, full range of these issues during the day and I find it all super interesting, super compelling. And I'm excited to be a part of getting the implementation of the cap moving. So thanks very much.
Thanks, Ken. Any questions or comments from members of the board for Ken? We'll move on to the next applicant, Alan Field. Hey, Alan, how are you?
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
Good to see you all. I see you. Yeah, I'll try to keep this brief and abbreviated maybe. I've been in town about 20 years. For about 15 of them, about 15 years ago, I was getting involved with environmental issues in town, among others, and have been ever since. I've been in a number of organizations over the years, non, you know, volunteer groups in town. I'm the director of Cool Winchester, which over the years has done many things from eco-teams to energy assessments to the Solarize Program. I don't mean we've done it, but we've been, we've been a partner to seeing that it happened. And, and most recently, I was on the Climate Action Advisory Committee until it was disbanded. Speaking of that committee, I was just in terms of history. I was involved, early on Fred Yen, an intern, started trying to collect data for the original Climate Action Plan. And at some point, he passed it on to me and I worked on that, which was a, which was a difficult task to try to get all the data about oil, oil and gas and electricity and, and all of the, all of the sectors of town, business, residential and commercial. Anyway, so I was involved in that early on, so it's still in my blood. I think enough of that, I'd like just to say that I think an important issue for you folks, actually, is leadership of the committee. And I'm really pleased to see so many people applying and some names that I don't know. But you, I think it's really important to have somebody chairing the committee who wants to do that and can do that and that it can rotate once in a while. So we don't want, you know, a committee that's got nobody who wants to be chair. And so I was disappointed to hear Ken didn't want to be on the committee because I thought he'd be a great chair. But anyway, like Ken, I am, I'm happy to be on the committee, but since we have a lot of applicants, I am perfectly willing to be on a working group instead. And in fact, more than that, I would come to the meetings anyway. I've, I've done, I used to go on the Wright Lock Farm Committee Board and they needed to get somebody else on the board. So I said, oh, yeah, I'll drop off. It won't make any difference. I'll come to meetings anyway. And I still do to this day. That was years ago. So likewise, I can be a full participant, except non-voting participant regardless. So as you play your cards as to how to shuffle people around, I can, I'm a flexible candidate. But, oh, and I really want to say that I am, I think we most need to address the biggest issues. The biggest issues are in the residential sector. That's most of the carbon footprint of the town. My particular interest is build the building, residential building. So it's energy, energy, electricity, heating, cooling issues. So those would be ones I'd like to focus on in particular, plus trying to harness local groups and local volunteers to sort of leverage, you know, to get their, get their additional help to, to make progress on the most important issues in our town's carbon footprint. Thanks.
Great, thanks, Alan. Any questions or comments from members of the board for Alan? Great. Thanks, Alan. Any questions or comments from members of the board for Alan? Okay, we'll move on to our next applicant, and I believe is the last on our list, Adriana Garber. Hi, Adriana. How are you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm a senior at Winchester High School. I'm 17, 18 in a month, and I have been a resident here in Winchester all my life. I love animals, plants, nature, the environment, and I believe it is my responsibility to care for it and preserve it. I have grown up and lived my life very environmentally conscious, and I would love to be part of something I'm so passionate about and have a ton of ideas I'm excited to talk about. Second, I have spent the summer working with surrounding communities focusing on food preservation and food security, especially during the instability brought by COVID-19. I partnered with an organization called Healthy Waltham to rescue fresh food from local farms and supermarkets and distribute them in a large-scale, COVID-friendly drive-through food pantry occurring four times a week to impoverished Hispanic and minority communities in Waltham. Also, I work with an organization called Food Link in Arlington and Lexington and rescue food from supermarkets and distribute them to shelters and food pantries in Boston. I would also bring my experience and knowledge of implementing real systems that are focused on bettering our communities as a whole, while reducing our waste and climate impact. I definitely have a lot to learn, but I'm hardworking, motivated, extremely passionate, and bring a unique, fresh perspective as a young Latina growing up in our town. I would love to bring that to the committee. I don't have a ton of experience, but I would honestly love to get involved in any capacity. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Adriana. Any comments or questions from members of the board? Okay. Thank you, everyone. I think unless there is someone that I missed, I think that we've gone through the applicants. As I mentioned at the outset, the board will be discussing the applications and the interviews at a, at another meeting. And we do have one and two terms, one and two-year terms that are, that are part of the committee. So we'll, we'll, we'll try to work that into our decision-making process as well. So thank you, everyone, again. We'll move on to our next agenda item. We've been kind of jumping around a little bit, but I also want to make sure that we get to matters from the audience. I don't know if there are any members that are here from the community that have wanted to make a comment on something that otherwise is not on our agenda. Please raise your hand, and we'll, we'll let you in to speak. And Sarah, I think, is there. I don't know if we've gotten Anne in. Hey, Anne, how are you?
Hi, I'm fine. The reason why I wanted to speak with you tonight is because some neighbors surrounding Abbey Road asked me to look into a situation for them. And what I found was that these neighbors were granted through the long history of permitting that project. I think it goes well, well back to 2016. And in that long history, the only concession or protection that they received from the, from the select board was that the houses would, of Abbey Road would be moved closer to the, to the curb, thereby providing more space between the new houses and the existing houses on Dana Road and on North Border Road. And what's happened is that the developers come in with the first lot to be developed, Lot 1. And on that lot, that developer halved the distance that was shown on the approved subdivision plan. So I am asking this board to say that the purpose of this mandate that was included in a development agreement, which said, "You shall build houses closer to the curb", was not to allow a larger lot for the developer to build a deeper house on. It was to, it was to increase the space between the proposed structures and the existing structures. And I'm hoping that the, that the, that the board might be able to weigh in on that on, before the ZBA's next meeting, which I believe is on October 15. In this particular instance, for Lot 1, they were supposed to make the, the front of the structure less than 20 feet. They did not. So purely on that basis, if they, if the ZBA goes ahead and permits this, the permit will not conform to the, to the development agreement. But that's kind of picky. I'm not, I'm not there to look at the letter. I'm here to you tonight to say, "We want to explain the reason why this mandate was put in in the first place. It wasn't to create deeper structures. It was to create the space necessary between, between structures that exist and new proposed structures." The first lot is really important, not just because it will set precedent for the rest of the lots, but also because the first lot has a, is a very old, is a budding, this very, very old house, which predates any zoning structures, and that house is built right on top of its border line. So of all of the houses, it requires the most space. Again, that was inherent to the subdivision, subdivision plans which were approved and is now being, I guess, modified. We are hoping that the planning board will step in and invite the developer to go through a formal subdivision modification. But even without that, we are asking the development, development, we're asking the select board to please step in and explain the reason that this mandate was made to build houses closer to the curb was not to give you more depth to your houses. It was to create more space between the houses. So that's why I'm here. We got a lot of interest between Ware Road and North Border, Border in this, in this project. They asked me to look into it because I'm pretty good at sifting through permits and permitting type stuff. And I did find that this one concession that they were granted was not, was not upheld. So I'm hoping that you will help.
Thanks, Anne. We did receive your letter on this topic as well. And Town Council, our Krieger is meeting with their attorney tomorrow, I believe. So we're hoping to get some, some answers here. So we'll certainly keep you apprised of, of those developments. But feel free to reach out to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Anne. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised for any matters in the audience. So we'll move on to, I'm going to start back up the top of the agenda for the acceptance of donations. We have a couple generous donations here that we have to formally accept under Section B of our agenda. And I'll take motions to that effect.
So I move that we accept with gratitude donations in the amount of $450 from the Carroll family and Artie Benos Sims to jewelers to support the Salt Marsh Park.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Yes, for me, motion carries unanimously, five to zero.
And I move that we accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $100 from the Winchester Savings Bank to be deposited into the fire department's gift account.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously, five to zero. And thank you again for those generous donations. Moving on to the town manager's report and comments. I think we have an appointment there and some updates.
Yes, the appointment of Brian Bevelakwa to the DPW W12 Water Sewer Special Equipment Operator. And this will need to waive the 15-day waiting period.
So I move that we waive the customary 15-day waiting period on the appointment of Brian Bevelakwa, excuse me, to Water and Sewer Special Equipment Operator.
Second.
All in favor? I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Lisa, did you have some updates on?
Yeah, just, just two quick announcements. We've got Hazardous Waste Day coming up on Saturday, October 10 at the DPW Waste Yard from 9:00 to noon. Also, we've announced the first of three high-dose clinics. This one is going to be October 7 at the Jenks Center. And we're asking people to call the Jenks Center to set up their appointment.
Great, thank you. Was there anything else that they needed from the select board as part of that effort?
I don't think so. I know there was a, a Board of Health meeting right before the select board meeting. So I just reached out to the Board Health Director to see if there's anything else they needed. Doesn't seem like anything at this time, but I'll let you know.
Okay, great. Thanks. And we'll continue to move down our agenda. Lisa, let me know if there's anything that I forget. I think that we've moved through most of the business items on the first page. And so we do have the, is number six in our business items, the waterfield lot, RFP. I don't know if that's something that we need to schedule a meeting for. If it was on there for a particular reason or just a general update?
I, that was a general update, but we covered a lot of those presentations and updates at the beginning of the public hearing, so we can move on.
Okay, great. Thanks. The warrant articles going to item seven for us to review the draft. I don't know if everybody's got an opportunity to take a look. Lisa, is there anything in particular there that we need to discuss?
I mean, some of them are not as flushed out as you'll see them. So for example, Article 6 is the waterfield lot disposition. So we're working on that, drafting that LDA. But a lot of that will be dependent on the decisions that the select board makes. So there are some, there's a couple placeholders here that are sort of waiting for other decisions to be made. There are also a number of, the planning board has put a number of articles on here right now. I think most of you have been apprised of the capital planning committee process that was pretty comprehensive this year. And some of these are just standard articles. But certainly, let me know how you want to proceed. If you want us to go through this more in depth on October 5. If you want a separate meeting to go through this, let me know.
Okay.
When does the warrant need to go out?
We have, I think, the October 17th, on or around that date. So there's a
That's when it goes to print, really, right?
Yeah, so the, the meeting on the 5th would really be a critical meeting, unless the board does set up a separate meeting to discuss this. And that might be advisable, given that, like, for example, the waterfield lot LDA is kind of dependent on what happens on the 5th.
So, so you would say a, another meeting after the 5th?
Yes, before, we need to sum this out.
And also, if there are any other questions from members of the board that can go to Mark and Lisa regarding the, the warrant, that would be helpful to, just to expedite the process as much as possible. Are there any other questions or comments on the warrant articles at this point?
I guess the only one I would have is on article, oh, they're all XX. It's not numbered. But the article on the Water and Sewer Enterprise Budget, I don't know if that's a standard article. And if we don't need it, we could just definitely postpone it. But if we really don't need it, and we could leave it off, an already long, crowded warrant, that might make sense. So it's kind of a, we need, just to review the financial information, I guess. So let us know.
Okay. Any other comments?
So I'm just trying to figure out which article you're talking about, but I can circle back a few. If you're talking about Article 27 or 28.
I'm muted. I have something with no numbers, but it's, on my copy, there's a note, you know, is the article required? Sorry, I don't know the number.
Okay.
Okay, Lisa, you'll follow up with Susan on that one. Okay, we will move on to the next agenda item, the liquor license fees. I think it was included in our packet Chen Caparello put together this spreadsheet, and it's a question for the board where a lot of the restaurants and businesses now are under a lot of economic pressure. You know, if we're going to be sending out the typical requests for the fees for the, for the licenses. So, you know, as you can see from the spreadsheet, there are many that have been closed since the beginning of the pandemic and others that may benefit from us substantially reducing the fee or waiving it for this year. I don't know if there's any thoughts from members of the board on that.
I was just wondering if Lisa knows what other towns or municipalities are doing. And also, if there's some way we can, you know, do we have to do a bit sort of standard, one change for all license holders? Or can we say waive them for the people who haven't been able to be open at all and notness? And maybe reduce the fees for the people who have been open? Is, you know, do we have any flexibility there? Those are my two questions.
So I don't know about whether or how we can tier the fees, but I can certainly look into that. I haven't yet heard of any other communities that are giving relief on this, but I wouldn't be surprised if it's under discussion. So I'll look into those two things.
It seems like it's, it's a pretty steep hill to climb for a lot of these struggling restaurants going into the fall, the cooler weather. The ones that have been open have really had the benefit of the outdoor seating. Some of them have at least, and I think that that, that asset to them is diminishing a little bit, even though there's been an expanded ability for restaurants to have more diners inside. You know, numbers are still going to be questionable, and a lot of them had to invest in a lot of the outdoor infrastructure to, the barriers and outdoor tables to allow them to keep open. So maybe we can have a recommendation for the October 5th meeting, if that makes sense. Cool. Thanks. Also, moving on to number nine, Fritzi Nace had sent us, all, I think, an email regarding putting a letter to the editor on wind power to encourage people to go on to the, and adopt the full renewable plan. So I think we're going to work to try to put something together. And if there's interest in the board for all of us to sign on to that, I think it would, it would be a good message to send. I don't know if anybody has any comments or questions or interest in drafting. Okay, does that, I mean, does that sound like something people would want to do?
Sure.
I haven't had a chance to read the letter, but, yeah, on its face, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. We'll start putting that together. And the last business item there, I was just wondering too, Lisa, if we're probably going to be moving back into Town Hall for at least some of our meetings. And I don't know if we've taken a look at what we need to do kind of a hybrid model where we're using Zoom at the same time, or if we need any additional updates to the select board room to make that happen. I know that a lot of our equipment has been there for a little while and might, might make sense for us to, to do that. I don't know if anybody has any comments or perspectives on that at all.
Mike, is there a time that you're thinking about doing that?
Not really, I mean, just, you know. I, I don't know if there's. Any opinion from members of the board on it, but.
Uh, at this time, I don't think we know. If, if any time in the future that, you know, we will be able to until. You know, there's a widely available vaccine. But, I mean, at, at that time, we might need some technology investment, whether that's this fiscal year or next fiscal year. Well, we'll just have to see.
Yeah, I just want to kind of prepare us for it if, while it's empty at this point, you know, that if there are things that we need to do to, to make it work. Because from my perspective, we, we have benefited somewhat from using Zoom. It's been a way for. Residents that are sitting at home to attend meetings and, you know, even at a, a point tonight, there were more than 50 people that were at our meeting, which. Normally wouldn't be happening in person. So, um, you know, if we do at some point, whether it be, you know. Later in the fall, winter, spring, you know, go back to a in-person session. It, it would be nice to kind of keep that option open as well, but it, it's, as we know, a little bit. Difficult to navigate all of that running the meeting without having somebody producing it, so we're. So it'd be nice, nice to kind of take a little piece of, of this forward with us and it may take a small investment, so we'll have to, we'll have to see.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting if the. If the TV that is mounted on the wall was able to be the Zoom board and. Maybe the vice chair or. Can control the, you know, keyboard and mouse or something.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, so that, so that, you know, we would be in the room together. But, you know, you wouldn't have to have, you know, a crowd of people. Making comment or doing, you know, doing what we did tonight. They could be. Remote and participate that way. I think the school committee tries to do that.
Yeah.
Using the room and Wind Cam. Seems to make sense, but Wind Cam is probably equipped a lot differently than Town Hall.
Right, yeah, that's, I mean, I guess that what I was thinking about, so, you know, moving forward, if there are things that Wind Cam has over their new facility that would. Make sense for us to adopt and invest in at this point, so we can have that same experience. From there, that would be great. And, you know, even one of the benefits that, that we've had as well is. Having staff be able to participate from their homes as well and not be sticking around till, what is it, 10:23, you know. Waiting to comment on something when they've already, you know, been at, been working since eight o'clock in the morning, so. So anyway, we'll follow up with that. I know Lisa's already. Reached out to Wind Cam about that as well, and so I think that there's something in the works, but if anybody has any. Particular affinity for discussing that or. Just. Reach out. Okay, moving down the agenda. We have the, a few items under our equity, any racism task force item. Susan, I didn't know, I know that we had the. Recognition of the Indigenous People Day and the land acknowledgement. Did we want to put that to the next meeting, you think? I mean, part of what's.
Sure.
I probably should have put that at the very beginning of the meeting, but we were kind of rushing to, to start, but it would, it would be nice to have that. Be something that we did when there were more people, at, at least in attendance.
Well, right, I, I mean, this, I thought of this as just sort of a discussion of, you know, the, the idea of as part of our anti-racism initiative. Taking a couple of steps in that direction, since we're looking at the second Monday in Nov- in October being. Columbus Day and other towns and a lot of people are talking about. Recognizing that as Indigenous Peoples Day instead, or doing some kind of recognition of Indigenous people. Sort of at the same time, because the understanding of Columbus that we all had growing up has evolved and that it's more factual to really. Understand the harm that the opening up of the quote unquote new world did. To Indigenous peoples. And talking about what we could do perhaps instead. November is Native American Heritage Month. Again, there's an opportunity there to do something to recognize Indigenous people, especially in relation to Winchester's history. And what a lot of other institutions are starting to do is, is. Called the land acknowledgement, where you, at the beginning of a meeting, acknowledge that you're on, you know, your, the land that you're on is, you know. The ancestral homeland of Indigenous people and you sort of recognize that and make it articulate. So that's what I wanted us to think about doing. Um, if you want to, you know, research it a little bit, you know, there's. I think some videos out there that. Some educational institutions have been doing. I, I know that a land acknowledgement was made at the beginning of. The Harvard School of Public Health. Recently by Elizabeth Solomon, who is a member of the Massachusetts tribe. And if you want to, you know, sort of get an idea for what that is, you could check that out. And yeah, we could talk about this more on the fifth.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Susan. So we'll. Tee that up. I don't know if anybody has any questions or comments on either one of those items, but we'll. We'll be ready to kind of handle that on the fifth. And also, Lisa, I know that. We've been evaluating this anti-racism project. And you've had some conversations around it and so maybe the next meeting or two, we'll have something to kind of move forward with.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay. So we'll move. The consent agenda.
So I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, I'll take a roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Is there anything that we missed? Lisa, did you see anything or anything that popped up that?
No, just. I, I, the consent agenda, um, the first item did include a follow-up to the conversation we had regarding the. Dentist office spaces, so this is a. Pilot program to. Give two passes to extend the ability for their patients to park at the one hour spaces for three hours, especially if they have surgery, so. And this is just through the remainder, remainder of the year. So Town Hall will be issuing these permits with your approval.
Great, thank you. If there aren't any other comments or items for the board, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And yes, for me, motion carries unanimously, five to zero. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for hanging in there tonight. I know it was a long meeting, but got a lot of good work done, so thank you. We'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Wind Cam.